Okay, Mr. Richard, are we ready?
Yes.
I'd like to reconvene Santon County Board of Commissioners, recognize Vice Chair Lee.
Would you join me up here please? Dear heaven and Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've been with us. We thank you for this county that we love so much. Thank you for the leadership and staff that worked so hard to get us organized into the school in the right direction. Again, we thank you for your blessings and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance today. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you.
May your family play soon now. Right. Oh, we have one now. Somehow I missed it. I'll play the lead.
To the right, on the right.
This time, recognize Mr. Ed Colson for a team member introduction.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to. I'm gonna give you a little bit of his background and let him talk for just a minute, but Mr. Rick Sauer is our new PMS director. He reported work on July 15th, and I think he has already been at Oral Pan and Activity and things that he has participated in. But one of the things we suggested to him is if he had time, we'd like him to come to the Water Summit because of all of the services he provides, it does have an interaction with the water system from time to time for more information he's had as to further. So that is the reason he is here. And he was unaware until just a few minutes ago that we were going to formally introduce him, and I apologize for that oversight. But let me give you just a little bit of his background, and after he talks and you get to work a little bit, I think you will understand why he was a good selection for our position. Since 2017, he was the Commissioner of Public Safety in Sullivan County, New York. He was responsible for the fire service, the emergency medical services, the 911 Communication Center, probation, and emergency management. He had seven employees and a budget that was over $5 million, so he had some experience. In addition to that, he has been a member of the New York State Incident Management Team since 2012. He was a sergeant for the New York State Police Emergency Management from 1989 to 2017. He has worked as a city police officer. He was also a public safety dispatcher for two years, and he has a master's degree in public administration. So he appears to me and to the people that ran with you, and he's been demonstrated experience that we will be able to fully utilize. And I can tell you, he's already hit the Grand Ole because I've already attended two or three meetings that he has participated in. So, Mr. Sauer, would you stand up and show him?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Colson and the commissioners for your confidence in the emergency services. There's a great bunch of people over there. I've only been here two weeks. Great bunch of people over there serving the community, and I look forward to it continuing. Thank you.
Well, obviously, welcome over. We're all excited, and we look forward to your impact on our county and just, you know, just serve as part of our entire county. I'm appreciative, appreciative of what you've done there. Any other commissioners? Thank you for joining the board.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. I hope you love Santon County as much as we do.
You got your work cut out for you. You're well worked. And so please feel free to hang with us here as we hear from our water, our public works director and his team and his vision for where we're going here in the county. This time, Mr. Lynn, the Honorable Lynn Ruppus.
My name's Lynn, Public Works Director. To my left, I've got Ashley Holland, he's the building superintendent. And Brian Royal, he's the, I call him the quality control man. But he's got experience with the fire departments as well, so they all interact. He takes care of all the testing, makes sure we've got a good clean water, and does a fine job. With this, we'll go ahead and get started. A lot of the new customers, or new customers, that we may have a problem with the maintenance of the water, keeping the water fresh. The, we'll talk about. Tab, but we will put in a new tab and then somebody leaves so that it balances out. District 2 is where the group is. It was formed in 1994. This sort of. Is this got to be self supported? There's no current tax dollars that fund construction, operation, or maintenance of the system. All of what we operate on is what is paid in and out of business. We currently have 6190 total customers, and about 350 of them do not buy water. They pay a monthly fee, $19.40, but they're not actually, they've got a tab, but they never file on it. I'm gonna turn this over to Brian for two or three slides. He's charged with supplying and making sure all the water's tested and everything, so Brian, you want to take it?
Yes, sir. Just some inventory we got in our system, have 550 miles of water line. On that, we got roughly 1,862 valves, and the valves water mainly used for is directional flushes so we can isolate an area to flush, or if we want to shut off an area, we've got a repair we've got to do so everybody's not out of water at once. So that's what the valves are used for, for flushing, directional flushing, and isolating and to minimize customers that's out of water would cause a problem while we're flushing. Fire hydrants, 353, and, which said fire hydrants, but I'm gonna give you an overview of Santon County's water system and fire hydrants. And I refer to City of Clinton. Any street you drive down in the City of Clinton has water on it. So I get to the courthouse and open up a fire hydrant. I've got water coming in all directions around the courthouse, so I pray for coming back. I'm not losing pressure. Iron system, let's go, I'm from Keener, let's go 701 North, open up a hydrant, 701. I've got water at Keener, I've got water coming off Keener Road, I've got it coming off of Braxall Road, I've got it coming off of Road 90 from Clinton, so I've got water coming both directions. So, yeah, I do have good water pressure out there. 421, Teller's Bridge area. That water line, where I live, our water line was put in to, you know, serve customers, but to sell water. We won't really be able to be a fire rated system. So if I go down to Teller's Bridge area in Old Clinton and open up a fire hydrant, I just don't have the looping system, the water coming back in the other direction. Everybody in Clinton, up at that point, when I opened up that hydrant, it's got water. But when I opened up that hydrant, everybody past that don't have anything. So then you lower the water pressure, and then you get bacteria in the water, and someone gets sick, and then I'm really being a case, so that's one reason we're not a fire rated system. So what would it take to be a fire rated system? Well, you have to have a hydrant on every thousand foot apart. So there's five, a little over 5,000 feet in a mile, so that's five hydrants per mile. I live on a road that is a mile and a half long. I got a four inch water main, but you can't put a hydrant on a four inch water main, so it'd have to be upgraded to a six inch. So I have eight hydrants on my road. That's just, it's not feasible to sell water.
I'd like to add one thing. I've done some research on this fire rated system. It's also more than just pressure. It costs twice as much to put in a fire rated system than a non-fire rated because you got to upgrade everything. You got to have more tanks.
Larger lines.
Larger lines. So if the county had $30, let's say $30,000, they, it wouldn't have gone, we wouldn't have had half the miles we got now. We would have cut the project in half, and that would probably shut this water system down. It probably would never go off the ground. So back in the '90s, the commissioners did a great job deciding on installing county water as a non-fire rated system. And it was borderline whether it would even work and maintain itself, or keep itself up. If they had put in a fire rated system, you couldn't have done it. Their water bills would have been twice as high.
And we've flow tested every hydrant. If it falls below 30 PSI required by the state to take it out of service, cannot be used. Now, we can use it when it's not high volume of water. So if we're gonna use that hydrant, we might go out late at night and flush when there's nobody using water. So what we're trying is we try to paint all the bonnets black on all the hydrants and then they'll file with fire departments, don't use anything with a black bonnet. I'm a fire chief, and that just didn't work. People still use them. I'm not saying fire departments use them. I mean, it was telephone contractors, it was different people, they were using them, and we're still having issues. So now what we've done in Santon County is we test the hydrants. If they fall below 30 PSI, we paint the whole fire hydrant black and turn it off on the ground. Well, I know you're gonna say, well, why are you gonna keep them? Well, why I'm gonna keep them is because on 421, I've got an eight inch water main. I need to flush a lot of clean water if I've got a major problem. So late at night, I can turn that back on and I can flush that water. I need to flush two and a half feet per second. So I need those hydrants on six inch, eight inch lines to flush. But we would just have to do it on a town that was not affected. Now, if you leave it open for fire, I mean, that can be any kind of day, so that's why I should turn it off. But that's, I know from the fire hydrants, but we got flushing hydrants. Master meters, we've got 17 of those in the county. What the master meters are, that's an example. We've got meters where we sell water to Altraville, we sell water to Johnson County. That's basically our meter that, that's my handful of sending. Also, we buy water, we buy water from Clinton, you're wrong with Roseboro. So those are master meters.
On the master meters, one interpretation from the state about two years ago was when that water goes through a master meter, it becomes a new system, a whole new fleet of testing. And we, it doubles our testing and expenses the same order on one side of the box to the other because the state regulators said we had to create a whole new system. We went from five systems to 11, is that right, or 12? 12, five to 12?
Yes.
It a little bit more, it more than double Brian's work load on testing just because their interpretation changed and the water was going through the meter, so.
Customer meters, we got roughly 6,000, or 6,100 customer meters, and that's basically how we charge your customers. When it goes through the meter, they're available at. When I first started here, we got out of the ready every meter. I mean, now technology's come along ways. We have a ready array meters, I call them smart meters, but you can actually ride by and it will pick it up on a laptop and get the reading. And what's one nice thing about the ready array meters is if someone says, well, I had high water bill last month, well, we can actually go out and we can say, yes, you have water, we'll go meter at 2:00 a.m. Or you might have a commotion at night, so that is very good for customers. Blow offs. We've got 231, what's a blow off? That is basically what we have on a four inch, two inch water main, usually in subdivisions at divisions. That's to flush the smaller diameter lines, just like a hydrant, but it's underground, which is a cap, you take a cap out, put a two inch pipe, and we flush water into each. Elevated storage tanks, we've got four of those. North Carolina Public Water Supply requires assistance to minimum a half a day water supply in the air in case, or in the tank, in case of emergency. So main break, well goes down, we've got water, we can survive, I mean, until we get our stuff back good or we can just reroute water from another area. The water is also helpful here in large flushing exercises so we can actually flush more water without trying to put a strain on the well. We also routinely isolate an area and try to use the water in the tank and then refill it so the water in the tank don't get stagnant or whatever. So that's basically our elevated storage tanks. Booster pump stations, we use to, we have five of those. And we use those to flush water throughout the system. We've got a new one we just put on to help boost pressure so we send water to Johnson County. We've got one for lifting water from Newton Road, maybe these. That's to boost water through county and heat pressure and also to send the elevated storage tanks. Flushing and testing. Or flushing requirements to improve water quality. Before you go out and flush, you've got to understand the water system. I mean, you can't go down the highway and open up a hydrant and expect to get good results. You've got to know, well, what are you trying to do? Do you have dirty water? If you've got dirty water, then it's when you come out to your valves. Okay, I need to shut this valve off here so I can pull direct water in one direction instead of trying to just open up a hydrant and water might become two directions. So that's basically, you've got to understand the system. You have to shut valves so you can pull water and isolate area in one direction. You need to know what size water main you're flushing. If you've got a 12 inch water main and my closest hydrant's a mile down the road, then you've got to calculate, say, how much water's in this pipe that I got to pull for a mile down the road until I get cleared. So you've got to know what size water main you, you've got to be familiar with the system. Why is the water dirty? I mean, that's a, every time I've had dirty water or cloudy water, there's always a reason. Was it a contractor using water, was it a fire department using water? But what's so aggravating? I mean, if I know that a fire department or a telephone contractor uses this water at 3:00 a.m., I can go out there and I can have the water cleared in 30 minutes. But if somebody uses a hydrant, they'll tell everybody, and it's dirty water, and it's all through the system, then you got to hit it. So that's why we're trying to get out and educate people to let us know if you've used water. And, I mean, fire departments are more than weapons. We use any hydrant, not any black. They cannot suck off the hydrant, they use them basically like a pump. They tend to fill up the truck, they get the fire, they dump the water, it comes out through the hydrant, they fill it. All we ask from them is, don't matter 2:00 in the morning, cameras, use me a telephone, come. I mean, we'll have someone out here to make sure we can correct any dirty water problems somebody has after that.
How often does that happen that you get a call after a fire?
I don't, we ask them, but I don't. I mean, I said I'm a fire chief, and, I mean, I live where my fire department's at, but I don't. But, I mean, that's what's aggravating because any time you get a problem, there's a reason behind the problem.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Who, what area gets a booster? You know, how?
Well, we have boosters at our wells. So that basically boosts the water from our wells in an area where we're trying to send water to another town, something like Newton Road. We've got one there that if we want to sell water in Newton Road, we have one at Spive's Corner if we need to boost water. But that's areas that we've done studies and seen that they have.
So why wouldn't Roseboro?
Well, Roseboro, we do have one at Pumpkin Town. We buy water from Roseboro, and we feed our customers on the Altraville side of Roseboro. We buy water from Roseboro, and then we sell it out to view. So we've got a booster pump right there at Pumpkin Town, Route 24.
We're tied into Roseboro on the west side of the town, and we use their water tank to put pressure down to Pumpkin Town, is that right?
Yes.
But not necessarily. But not necessarily the Salemburg area.
We don't have, we don't have water Salemburg.
Nothing in Salemburg.
No, that would be on town Salemburg.
Now, um, routine flushing, that's what we do on a daily basis. We go out to our D N's, our, we got area at, uh, this area that is we, and then we go through the system. But we go through the system and we flush to D N's. Um, during major flushes, we notify the customer in case they might need to not wash clothes during that point in time or whatever. Um, but we flush all D N's and any customer complaint period. If people come out and say, I've got some dirty water, we might not do it without. Okay, people say, well, I've had dirty water for two weeks. I don't know if you don't care. Um, but like I said, there's always a reason why we got it. We just got to figure it out. Um, we evaluate conditions and operate hydrants. Um, when routine flushing, we try not to flush in an area where pressure may control. So we do that at nighttime. I try not to do it in their business or a school period. They, I don't want to interfere with schools. Also, during scheduled flushing time, once that we notify the customer. So that's a period. Um, infrastructure inspection plan, um, I refer to as O and N, operation maintenance. And as I said earlier, we, we operate all of these valves yearly to make sure we turn freely, um, hydrants not leaking, the blow off valve works. Um, all these valves are beside the highways where water lines is, or by, by the ditch or on the back side of the ditch. So you know, when grass grows, instead of, you don't touch them once a year, it's going to grow over. So we're not trying to come out, touch them once a year, make sure we operate. So three o'clock in the morning, when we have a main break, we can shut this off, shut this off, and we can have ten big bottle of water instead of a hundred big bottle of them. Um, now sampling. Uh, just some of the major samples I do, um, factory biological sampling. I did twenty-four of those in the, um, and those samples, they're routine, the state requires, um, throughout the system, um.
Mind you, that's for each system. We have twelve of them.
Well, yeah, well, twenty-four is totally for a whole system.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I, and I'll tell you why that's so high. I mean, because it is high. Um, and then we take those to Pearl, well, Leyton Pearl at Texas. And then in eighteen hours, these are looks coming back. And when the look comes back, if it's not done, we then, and then look, I have to load it with computer and notify the state. I'll take out twenty-four. Well, we're, I'm just one minute. They're not here. One, two, three bottles. But um, the sample is also required during any time we have a main break or a low water pressure. So if someone happens to open up a hydrant tonight and these people down this road lose water, then I need to go out there and take it back to you. I mean, because they lost water pressure. Just to make sure it's about to, make you drill that water. So it's not just routine every time we have a main break or lose water pressure. And also during that time, we have to notify the customers. They boil your water, be on safe side, boil your water. And then they seen the twenty-four hours, I will notify you. It's, it's about banning it. I'm gonna take another. And so, like, most time, I mean, we flush water after an incident and get, get chlorine in. So we don't have any bad ones. Uh, lead and topper. We have a hundred and twenty-five samples every three years. But it's not, because one this year and then three years later, they're spread out throughout the year. So every year, you've got some lead and toppers. One time consuming about lead and topper is it has to be waters left in a customer's pipe at least six hours. It's first trial water. So, and I've also got to meet with the person, give them the bottle, give them instructions how to take a sample because most likely it's going to be when it first wakes up in the morning time. So you've got to catch people home. People work here today. So this might be something I come in an hour late and work at seven o'clock at night, try to catch people home. So I give them this bottle and say, look, please fill this up. And then stick it back on your doorstep in the morning. I'm about to get it and send it out. So lead and topper, that's a challenge. Um, some other samples we take, um, nitrates, um, disinfected byproducts, rads, inorganics. All of these samples are basically just checking any kind of contamination to the water. I mean, just make sure everything's safe. So we, we test the water and we test, I mean, we're very safe on our water. Um, but also, I just wanted to, one thing you, uh, Lynn was saying earlier about twelve water systems. You go to city of Clinton, I mean, city of Clinton again, they might only work, I said I had two more back here. They might have four. But we've got twelve systems. So Clinton, along the five systems, Plainview's one system, Turkey's one system, Roseboro's one system, Altraville's one system, Garland's two systems. And then we've got our Sampson County well system. So each one of them systems are tested totally different. And daily, we have to go out and check chlorine, make sure there's chlorine at the end of line. That has to be reported. So that's on top of the water sample. But that's basically what I kind of oversee in my career business, the flushing and the water quality of the water system. And we've got a guy with a maintenance, water maintenance. They call, want to work that. He's, he's the best person there. They call me, they got dirty water. Nobody likes mentioning. They call me because they won't, they're complaining, isn't it? So it's, it's challenging.
Just for the record, I like.
Anybody got any questions on the testing? We'll move on when you have one.
I could just, when you say dirty water, what do you mean by dirty water?
We'll cover that in just a minute. I've got it in my presentation. About two more slides. The um, the current project update is um, we've got iron manganese treatment. Says that existing wells, it's underway and it's being built by grants and loans. We've got I forty, um, forty-three well underway, grants, loans and reserves. Johnston County Phase Two, it's underway. It's got loans. Um, South Eldridge is, uh, road is underway. It's not going to be funded by reserves. Some of the completed projects are Welly Road, paid by reserves, McKenzie Road, Bullard Pit, Lee Road, Green Path Road. And Johnston County Phase One was complete and it was paid by grants and loans. So we've got a lot of projects going on.
So, so Mr. Rumm, and I'm probably going to get ahead of you. So you feel free to say it's kind of, but when you go through these projects that were completed and these projects that are underway, and you say paid by reserve, did you have a criteria that you determined that these projects were economically feasible to a non-tax paid or a non-tax supportive water system?
Basically ten customers per mile is the, is the target. And it, we've got, we may have some roads in the county that's got ten per mile. There's not many of them. Because I've written every road in the county and counted the homes. And there's usually fifty to sixty percent people sign up if you go down a road. So I counted all the homes on every road in the county that does not have water. So I know what's happening. And um, there's not many homes in this county. It's got ten homes per mile. That's a home every five hundred feet. That's a lot. Um, the only other way that, that I would recommend a road that they were a transmission line, like tying into Johnston County water system, where we're selling bulk amount of water, we're selling over twelve thousand dollars of water a month now. And it's going to be over thirty thousand, probably about the end of the year per month.
So, so Mr. Rumm, so let me ask you a question. And if I'm getting ahead of you now, you tell. But while we're on these projects, so ten, ten homes per mile, and if you, if the historical data tells you that it's only about a fifty percent rate. So that's twenty per mile. But, but the thing is, it's not just that one mile.
No, sir.
It's how, it's wherever you got.
It's, it's from the water source to the end of the project.
Yeah. So if you got a, if you got a water line on this road and you got to go ten miles that way, you need how, total how many homes?
Whatever the total mileage is times ten homes per mile.
Well, really twenty, because you only go.
If you go to fifty percent.
So, so, so my point is, just for everybody to understand, there's a, there's a reason or a criteria that, that we, that you build these reserves.
And, and it's more than just the, the money to put it in. It's the, you, you've got to use the water where it'd be stale and it'd be dirty water. And I, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. If you've got a long line, you have to put in five miles of water line to serve a particular road, that water in that pipe's got to be used within seven to fourteen days or it will turn dark.
That's a reason you really want to loot someone.
You want to loot. And you want to, you want to love people. And it takes about ten per mile to pay for itself and to use the water and the water lines to keep it fresh.
But that's, that is paying for it over time.
Yes.
Present, uh, the, the present use value of money brought back and, and the, so, so now, let me make one more point. So the theory here is, and you please correct me if I'm wrong, but the theory is, we're selling water to Johnston County at a premium bulk rate in order to build those reserves. So we have money to put in those projects that need, as that reserve builds, you would be in a financial position to possibly reduce that to where it's not such a high number because you've sold water, you've got money in your reserves. Because I mean, obviously, I mean, I just go ahead and say, I mean, everybody in, everybody in this room, I mean, wants water. I mean, that's just how it is.
Well, that is by my ass.
So, but the thing is, and that's the goal of, that's your goal.
That's the goal.
Right. Because not to build a fire rated system that has the high cost, but the goal is a system that can provide water to the citizens of Sampson County.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
We have, we've used some of those reserves in the last two or three years since I've been here on Welly Road, McKenzie Road, Bullard Pit. They were real short roads. We had over ten per mile. They qualified. And because they were short, we had enough money in the reserves to do it.
But they would pay for their cell over time.
They would pay for stuff.
So we just weren't like throwing a dart at the wall and said, hey, you know what? We're gonna get, we're gonna put water on this road. There was cri, there is criteria.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will make sure I, make sure I was, I was on track.
I just have a question because you said.
Well, now, now, hold on just a minute now. So really, just clarify a minute, say. So, and there's really no public comment in these work sessions? But if you will, hold your questions to the end. If we run long, you can put them in writing and we'll deal with them. But if there's time at the end, I certainly want to hear your questions. And, and first thing is, when we do those questions, if you will, tell us who you are. So do you mind holding that to the end?
I mean, if you, if you'll remember, I, I was going to just ask a question about what you meant by, some of the language is a little.
Tagged.
Right. So I was wondering.
What would, what would, well, let's do that. Let's do that question. What, what would it?
Because like the difference, if I'm reading, I see like I forty, North Carolina four or three wells, does that mean that you're building a well there that people can extract water from? I'm trying to figure out what's the difference, like when you say a reserve versus a well.
Well, it was paid for. What he's saying is that well is, is underway. In other words, it's underway. But to the right of the dash is paid for by grants, loans and cash reserve that the water system has.
Now, what does it mean when you're like, when you're saying like, we just constructed? Because I saw that in the budget, like, of new, no one's being built. What does that mean? Like, if a citizen saw that, would that mean, that makes me think, oh, if you're putting a well there, then you can come to District Four and put some in the southern part. So I'm, I'm wondering what it means when it says.
Well, that's why I wanted to make clear that there's criteria. It's not just willy-nilly. There's criteria because it has to pay for itself. I mean, this is a no, non-tax dollar. There's not, there's never been a tax dollar put in this. Your salary is paid out of the water system.
Yes.
So it's not a tax. It's, it's operating entity. And so when you want to know, well, can I get water? That's the current criteria. Is it the criteria forever? I certainly hope not. That's not the government. They want to get everybody water. But it is a current criteria. And I, and remind me, I can't see behind that mask.
Danielle.
What's your last name?
Coons, K O.
Ms. Coons, that's right. I thought it was you. So yeah, that's perfectly fine. Not, not a problem. But if you just hold it in and let him walk through, because he might answer some questions. But I wanted to get that out so everybody would know where we're, what the criteria and what, what the goals are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Miss Rumm.
Okay. Some of the future projects that we've got a target on, says overhead tank and a booster in northwestern corner of the county, if, if there's funding. Um, we've got pressure problems in that part of the county. That's where a lot of our customers are. Um, we've got a lot of pressure concerns in the Clement area. So that would be one of the possible projects. A well at Keener, if it's funded. It was not funded in the July funding cycle.
Now, now, Lynn, just so you're careful. Now, that, you went to a grant source and proposed that.
Yes.
That is money given to you by the state of North Carolina or by the federal government.
The North Carolina Infrastructure Committee.
That's right. And they have a ranking process.
They've got a ranking process.
And it did not make, it did not, it did not make the cut. It was only, um, given, they do it on
a point system. And this particular well was twenty-three points. The lowest score that was given funding was sixty-one in the state. So, um, we had South McCullen Road Loop. It was not funded in July. It only scored twenty points. The Harrells Interconnect on Herring Road, it was not funded. It scored twenty points. And that was a project that's got a lot of homes on it. And then, um, we got, we're considering Lake Wood School Road, if, if there's funding available. It has not been sent to Raleigh yet, but it will be in September. Um, that's when the next cycle is. So we're, we're relying on the North Carolina Infrastructure Committee that helped us with some grants, that helped install some of these systems. But it is a money issue. There's a lot of homes on Lake Wood School Road, a lot of them on Herring Road. But it's going to be very expensive to put those lines in. Um, I'll talk about the water sources in a minute. That's one of, Lake Wood School Road has got a, um, water source concern.
So, so Mr. Rumm, let me ask you a question. And I don't mean to get ahead of you. But when you look at the Herring Road, Lake Wood School, or Lake Wood School, you've not sent it up. South McCullen, these that were not funded, they score in the twenties.
Yes, sir.
And are you intending on sending a lowing score project again?
They're, once they're in the cycle, they don't, they stay there. They, they reconsider them next time. I don't have to do anything.
But, but is there ways to, is there ways to, to, um, um, yes. That's, that's, that is, you took it out of my head.
The only one that we were able to increase was Keener, the Keener well. The other ones, when the, when the Infrastructure Committee sees an application, whenever they review an application, if it has water expansion, you get no points for that. No points.
Lynn, who, who awards the points?
North Carolina Infrastructure.
You don't.
No.
The state does.
The state does.
How much money do they have in that fund?
It, it varies every quarter. And, and their, their big money round is in September. And we're actually going to training next week to learn about some new money they've got coming in.
Is it, is it analogous to the, uh, uh, Highway Department of Transportation, uh, Department of Transportation in their, uh, point system and funding? I know that, uh, you take Highway twenty-four was funded, uh, the segment from Fayetteville to Clinton is built. We got nine miles left to build. And, uh, it's rated the same way in points. However, each year it gets kicked down because someone else rates a little higher. And it never gets back up there. So we're, I understand, we're waiting to twenty, thirty at the earliest that that will be completed. So is this, this system's kind of working the same way?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a, the Infrastructure Committee is a smaller scale committee, um, Um, they're pretty consistent, they are consistent with how they find the projects. And they're, they're leaning more toward loans more now than they are grants.
So, so Ms. Brown, so let, Commissioner Lee, if I can. So you and I had a conversation and I, did you convey that conversation to Ms. Coons? So, so what, when you talk about raising the point scale, it is my understanding that you have water samples or in the process of bringing water samples. And if those water samples are above, uh, if there's someone that has, uh, uh, water that is above, and Lynn, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that is above the state of North Carolina's requirement in whether it be nitrate or cadmium or whatever, then that's how you, that's an immediate raise to these.
Yes, sir.
Which, you know, that's a, that's a critical issue. If you have that data, if you can put it in writing and send it to us, that's what I convey to Commissioner Lee. I mean, it, it would be a great, it would, I mean, because surely there's nobody out of the sixty thousand people in San Francisco wants somebody bringing water that's out of the state of North Carolina's recommendation for, for, for a chemical analysis. So if you have that information, that is what would be super helpful. Okay. All right. So good. All right, Ms. Brown, I'm, I'm gonna do everything I can not interrupt you for another six to nine seconds.
Some of the system policies, policies we have is a nineteen dollar, forty cent flat fee and four eighty-five, four dollars and eighty-five cents per thousand gallons of water usage. The average water bill in the county is still forty-three dollars a month, hasn't changed in years. The, uh, what has changed, some of our suppliers at the bottom, um, the city of Clinton rate has stayed the same, but we just reworked a new, um, contract with them where they actually give us a tier rate where it's going to save us about three or four thousand dollars a year. We buy over a certain amount, they're going to reduce the price to two dollars a thousand. The town of Roseboro is three dollars and thirty-six cents a thousand. So we don't make much profit off what we buy from Roseboro on the west side of, um, Roseboro goes to Old Townville. We make very little money down there. Um, town of Old Townville charges us what we charge them and, and we're going to have to correct that in a few days. The, uh, we, we sell our water to town of Old Townville and we've got a small system on the west side of Old Townville. So we have to buy, order back from them to back into town. We use their water lines to get the water to our water system, save us a lot of money. So we don't, they don't make any money off of us. We, we make, we might make a little bit. We don't make anything off them. We break even, but that's a trade we do. The town of Turkey is a dollar and fifty cent a thousand. They got very little water. Um, their wells are just about maxed out. The town of Garland charges us four dollars a thousand and we've got no wells. We've got no wells down there. We got to pay it. We, um, we basically make nineteen forty off of our customers down there. They very little off the, um, water itself. So, um, and the city of Dunn is, is, um, two dollars and fourteen cent. I think they're, they're going up to two twenty, two dollars and twenty cent. But I, I put this in here to let everybody know. When we tie onto a water system, we're at the mercy of the water system. If they go up and we've got no wells, we've got to pay it. And the, um, the town of Garland and the town of Roseboro are jacking the rates up on us and we've got no other options other than to pay it.
Well, Lynn, if you, if I can, uh, albeit the high price, do they have more water in the town of Garland available?
They got water. I mean, it's, they don't have huge abundance, but they got.
But what, but could, could you add off of their system, albeit I get the high price? Do they have more excess capacity of significance?
There's not many homes down there that have grown.
Well, that's not my question.
We can't expand.
Yeah. The, do they have water?
Volume.
Volume.
Yes.
Now, we're, how much do we buy from, just off top of you?
We don't buy that much, about three or four thousand dollars worth a month, whatever it is.
I mean, can they double that? Does their system have capacity or you don't?
I don't know.
Uh, uh, unfair question.
But there's, there's, to expand the system in Garland, there's no homes beyond where our water line is.
I understand. I was just curious if they had, if they had excess capacity.
They don't, they don't have a lot.
I don't think I asked it wrong, but that, that's all I'm asking. If they, do they just all set aside, we went to Garland, say we want to double or triple our usage? Do they have that kind of infrastructure?
I don't think so.
Let me, let me reiterate this. When you say we make money, well, that's, that's a profit that we're making that we use to fund other projects. If we really don't make any money.
I used to fund in operations.
Right.
Salaries and all that, that's just the water cost. That's not the testing cost or anything else. That's what that money goes for, the cash and salaries and.
Very good. I think you see if I can get you straight for a quick. Uh.
Good point.
Good point. Go ahead.
The, um, system policies, the current expansion policies. Um, we've got petitions on file that's been there since nineteen nineties. Um, some of the petitions were planned during District Two, Phase Three and Four that were removed due to lack of sign up and interest. Historically, the system can't fund petition projects because they cost so much. Right now, one mile of water line is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just to put a water line in and pay the engineering fees. So we can do little short runs of runs that we've got ten per mile, ten customers per mile. But if it's a real long system, we don't have the money in the reserves to pay it. It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per mile to put one in. We're looking on ten customers per mile. We're looking if there's available funding, whether it be in Raleigh or in our reserves. We, um, we have to look at operation and maintenance considerations. If I run five miles of water line, let's say I get a grant for five miles of water line, they're going to pay a hundred percent. But once we put that water line in, if I've got thirty homes at the end of that five mile line, they cannot use enough water to keep that water clean. So I'm like to dump it on the ground at night time. Bronson might go down there at night time, dump water on the ground every two weeks. So if I'm buying that water from, give you an example, town of Harrells, and we dump as much as we sell, that's just double my price of what is being used. If I'm, if I were to pay the town of Harrells two dollars and a half a thousand and I dump half of it on the ground, I'd really pay five dollars a thousand for the water that's used. Is that?
Let me throw this out there. If we were blessed enough to get a grant to cover the whole county, we still have to have the usage by the people to make the system operate efficiently.
That, that water has to turn, has to be turned over so people, it has to be used, has to be, has to move. And, um, the other option is to go to the community, put a well in, then you've got to have overhead storage. You've got a two million dollar water tank you've got to put in, you've got to put a half a million dollar well in minimum. You've got to put the water lines in so everything you touch turns into the money. And I, I think I've shared with Ms. Lee, for example, that, um, I've moved to run that extra six, seven miles from either town of Acton or town of Harrells. It's going to cost, by the time I added a booster pump, overhead tank, if I put a well in, it's going to cost three or four million dollars. If I ran it all the way to Harrells, it would cost, was it eight or five?
Six million.
Six million. It was, it just, it just, everything escalated the price. Um, so that's just, that's just some of the obstacles we've got for basic. Um, to make the water system improve on expansion, you've got, you minimize flushing by using a loop system. Improve chlorine, res- residues, additional consumption, that, that is the key to what's keeping up with. On additions, you've got, if you've got additional infrastructure, you've got more meters to turn. Bronson's got over two thousand fire hydrants and meters now he has to operate at least once a year. He's got four people to do plus the regular work. You've got meters, valves and hydrants. Well maintenance, staff member has to visit the well daily. We've got tank maintenance system under contract, so that's a good shift. Economic feasibility, we have to look at the location of proposed expansion. Is there available water source, water supply? We also have to look at the ten customers per mile, connection policies. We have people to sign up on petitions and at the end of the day, they don't sign up for water. They just want a water line to go by their house. We have, we have, we're making, um, we're acquiring people on the petition that'll sign a contract because we've had so many bailouts. So I may have twenty people on a petition for two miles, that looks great. When I go out and put the water line in, twenty-five percent of them won't. Consumption policy or the standard rates enough, the cost per tab. The target now is ten thousand dollars, um, ten thousand dollars per tab for a twenty year payback. If we've got ten thousand dollars in a tab, it takes twenty years for them to get that money back. It used to be five thousand dollars. Everything's done. Available funding, we've got loans, grants and reserves. That's, that's the only money we got. We don't have any, we don't have tax money for a loan. We have to, the system is an enterprise, it's got to keep itself up. The, um, rate structure, should the system support itself or be included as a whole system? If I go down and put a well in at, um, outside of Roseboro, is that system going to be on its own and maintain itself? Or is the whole system going to help support it? That's something the board would have to tell me. Um, is the system capable of supporting itself financially? And is the volume of usage enough to keep the system fresh? Long trunk lines in remote areas have worked on our challenges. We talked about that. Water stored in our period, our lines for long periods, over seven days, sometimes changes color. It has to do with the time it's in there and the, the temperature. If it's in summer, we have a lot more problems with dirty water. The cost of the temperature and the time breaks down the chemicals, the chlorine and, um, and it changes the color of water and we have to dump on the ground. This results in dirty water. That's dirty water.
But, but Lynn, isn't it, what, what, it's not just the magnesium that DPT's out while it sits in lines? That's a piece of it, which you're working on.
Yeah.
You, you're working on that.
It's several minerals, minerals plus the chlorine, all that interacts, makes dirty water whenever the heat, especially in summer. In the summer, we're fighting the heat. Less consumption because schools are closed. When schools are open, that helps. Summertime, we get hit up.
But, but so, so just back up. So you've got the magnesium that DPT's out while it sits in the, in the lower parts of the line.
Yeah.
When it gets a big, when you get a big pool for water, then it flushes through that. Then you've got the fact that the, it sets in the line, the chlorine dilutes potential bacteria. And, but when you say dirty, when you wash your, if you wash your white shirt in that water, it comes out brown. Is that, is that the explanation? But honestly, the other night when somebody was talking about their well, had that water engine out, I was like, is she on county water or well? I don't know which one's the problem. We had the same problem. So go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Dirty water also shows up from southern end of the pipe, being stirred from fire hydrant use. Water line breaks for any sudden change in water velocity. An example given, in the Plain area, we had complaints from the county water being dirty. We investigated, looked at the historical data we had. The, um, the water in question came from our wells in NC four oh three. That's a long way from water. So we began buying water from Dunn to resolve the issue. So we, the water's pressure is a, a shorter pool. Um, we were able to use the four oh three water in another part of the county. So we didn't, we're not buying more water, we just moved, moved our operation around. So, um, that's how we resolved that.
Can you speak, Ms. Brown, can you speak to lots of our largest consumer of water, modern needs?
I'm not, we let Brian talk about that because I, I had been here since they were using massive quantity.
That was, well, that was.
Our banks used to use close to a million gallons a day. I mean, and which, the system was kind of built because we had a large amount of water being sent to Mortal Mix. So we got a twelve inch water main, sent down probably thirteen of Mortal Mix. Then when Mortal Mix went out of business, quit using water then, we didn't have enough people using the water. So it was getting stagnant and we were dumping it on the ground.
But it's also a blow to the finances of our, of our system. I, I just, I just made that.
Lynn, how much does indeed you use?
Well, they, they only need a gallon. Their bill's about twelve thousand a month.
So they use how much?
I don't have any gallons.
You know, I, I think Lynn tells in dollars. That's why I'm, yeah.
Well, I do too.
Twelve thousand dollars a month.
Twelve thousand dollars a month.
But that roughly, just roughly, what is that equivalent?
It's about four million gallons.
About four million gallons?
Somewhere around four, get a, a month.
A month?
Yeah.
So, so roughly, one point two million gallons a day?
Someone.
If you fully put it first out on that.
A week.
A week, a week.
A week.
A week. It's four ga- a four million gallons a month is what they're using in paper.
Yeah, if you divide that by thirty, it don't come to that.
Not why.
What's, what's? All right, let's, let's, let's stick to that.
Hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons a day.
Thank you. So they're about, they're about, how many?
Hundred and thirty-three thousand.
About ten percent or a lot more.
And we never get dirty water on that line because they keep, they keep it fresh. It's moving, moving all the time.
Okay.
The expense of increased flushing and water turnover dumping on the ground to keep the water fresh is, is, is pretty high. Each well's permitted to generate a certain volume of water per year. Water being flushed uses up this permitted limit and the cost of production also increases. So you, you dump water on the ground, your cost of production's going up. Some of the impacts on continued water interconnections, we've got some concerns when we purchased water from others. We've already talked about that some. Um, some small towns have increased the rates so high, we, we, we don't make very much profit. Um, we're at the mercy of the water. Options to add water lines is, um, is one thing we, we always look at. I've got a list of, um, roads that let them have water on if we can ever find the money, you know, we'll take the money. Sources of water, one, one item we look at is, is a long trunk line to the county system the way to go? Is the interconnection to another municipality the way to go? Is a well, storage tank and booster pump make their own system? Is it the way to go? Will it pay for itself? I have to look at all that before I recommend any type of, um, changes in the system or any new projects. What determines economic feasibility? Basically, um, will the system, is it self-funding or self-sustaining? Will the project fund itself? Who funds the preliminary activities? These engineers are very expensive. If I want a project, they'll do a study for me, but there's a price to pay for that. It could be ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars for a study. How long is the payback on a project? If you see me go to the board, I'll give them a payback. If it's a trunk line we put in, that, that's, I'm not, I think, there's no payback year on that. That is a trunk line to make money. You know, if we add a water system to a certain road, people on the list sign up, I know what it costs to put in a tab, I can do the numbers and I give it to the company. Is, is there water available? Is there available water supply? How many customers are on that road and what rate structure are we going to use? Normal or is that system going to, um, is that system that we want to build, if it's separate, is it going to pay for itself with, with a different rate? separate, is it going to pay for itself with, with a different rate? All the funding comes from Raleigh, channeled through, um, North Carolina Public, um, Environmental Quality. They've got a unit called Water Resources. It goes down to Christmas tree, I call it, to public water supply section. That's who we act with, the public water supply. Public Water Supply is tasked to regulate public water systems and there's over six thousand of them in state. So, they've got a whole task. The Water Infrastructure Board, Mr. Kidd, is an eight-member board and administers all these grants and loans and there's six different types of way to get money on this list and they've got a board that decides that with the point system. So, it's, it's, they're really consistent.
Is that board appointed or are they state employees?
Some of them, um, there's a committee that recommends to, to this, there's a state committee that does the research. They go back and see if the points make sense. They're the ones that adopt the points and they're real consistent. They have to string them and do it wrong yet. On the computer and it's open to anybody to look at. You can pull up DEQ and look up, um, Water Resources and drill down. It will show you all the projects that they reviewed. They even put notes on there why they adopted, adopted points. They adopted some ten points for a cleaner well and they put a note out there why. So, um.
What about DOT?
Yeah, DOT is a little bit.
Do you have a local board? Do you have a local board? San Francisco County resident?
Yes, good. Yes, good. Yes, good. The, um, the state employees have got a group that recommend this infrastructure board and they're, they are appointed by the governor and by the, um, Senate pro temp and similar. They're pretty high profile people. They're, they're, you can look them all up. They're, they're professionals in the business. They're, they're just not politically appointed. System policies, funding options. One is pay-as-you-do policy, fully funded out by the county out of reserves. We've been doing some of that as we could, um, funded, funded policies. We've got State Revolving Fund, which is the previous page, and then there's some other available funding sources. That's on the previous page. And one of the policies that the board has to look at is, they want to assess the whole system, the pay-for system that is questionable. If you, if you've got an area that doesn't have the numbers, the board would have to decide whether you put water down there.
But if you don't get a grant and you don't get a loan and you ain't got it in reserve, it's probably not going to be a good DA. We, we can raise ten hands. Well, that, that, oh, we can go.
Well, the system has got to pay for it. It all goes back, it's an enterprise and it's got to pay for itself. And, and with the point system in Raleigh, a lot of these projects we stand up, it comes right back in our lap, but we've got to fund it if we want. So, um, definitely got a lot of challenges and a lot of needs. There's been several studies done. There's been Roseburg and Saddleberg interconnection. That was a few years ago, they did a study. The study said that if they interconnected with the improvements, they would need to make the interconnected systems consistent. It would raise the rates up seventy-five percent per thousand. Well, we're currently generating water at about a dollar dot one oh five a thousand. That would jack it up seventy-five percent to a dollar seventy-five. And it, the, the board back then said, we're just not going to do it. I mean, it was, it was a good idea not to spend that extra money. There wasn't any grants at the time and they'd looked at Ivanhoe area interconnection. The study said the minimum bill would be between, um, would be a hundred and six dollars a month with fifty percent participation. That means that somebody would have to give fifty percent of the money to pay for the system to go down there. And we've already talked about it, it could be up to five million dollars. Nobody's got that kind of money in this county to fork out fifty percent. A second study revealed that monthly bill could be as high as a hundred and fifty-two dollars a month for that system to justify itself.
But fifty percent participation is not fifty percent of the tab. It means if it costs five million dollars, you get two, two and a half million dollars there from another source. And still, even if you've got half the money to build a minimum, it's a hundred and six dollars a month. That's pretty cool. Twelve hundred dollars a year.
The, um, the next couple sheets.
Lynn, can I, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, once and for all, don't be in that subject that I know a little bit about.
No, no.
I'd like to share with the board, particularly people that may not have heard some of my experiences with USDA. I've retired from USDA after about thirty-five years and I would say probably for twenty to twenty-five years that I spent about fifty percent of my time on water and sewer type projects, okay? Not only do I have some understanding of the challenges you face when you're trying to expand or build a system, I also know the challenges and problems that you get into if you expand and you weren't prepared for and what it does. Because a good bit of my time was spending with a, a, a couple of towns, for example, that were almost in bankruptcy because they could not afford what they had taken home to do. And, and, and that gets into heart-wrenching and they were owing money to another entity that felt like they needed the money. Uh, and I think they had built up a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar debt at one time that they had no chances of repaying. And so, those kinds of things are, are, are heart-wrenching. Back up just a minute, he has a couple of things. Everything they have said is correct in, in, in that you could not have afforded a fire ready system. Keep in mind with the system that you got at the time these, these, these line, the water system was put in, you received between forty or fifty percent of grant in order to install what you got. So, then you question, well, why aren't there two districts? And, and what did you do? Well, it comes into dealing with the available funding. And if you look at a map of what basically was done with the system, you did District One, down Highway twenty-four, which you were trying to establish and start your system, and start your system where you had population. And then, when you did District Two, you basically did four twenty-one and seven-one. Here again, you were hitting another population hole. The whole object, the whole object of, of what, what you were doing, of, of what you, what you were doing was to get you something to build or you could establish and generate some revenue. And then as the populations grew and things changed, you could use that to fine route your system as much as you could. I would tell you that for a large geographic county such as Sampson County, I think it's quite remarkable that these guys and you have done what you have done today. That, that is simple, that, that is simply remarkable. And I think having these kinds, because it, with, with five-hundred-and-fifty miles of line and six thousand, the problem you've got with dead water and whatever, uh, yes, you are in good shape today, but it would not take much to get you out of good shape. So, when you come in and you talk about expansion and expansion and you're selling water to Johnson County, you're creating water movement, number one, to help your system. You also create revenue that will help, help you over time. That being said, when they come in and talk to you about, well, we need to have two customers to mine, keep in mind, that basic figure, I think, they were talking about, you've got an existing system with an existing water supply. You're talking about the cost of putting line in and adding picklot. Well, every system and everything that you do when you get into expansion is different. Number one, what are the soil conditions of where you put the lines? Well, generally, we will not have those problems unless you've got a lot of fiber rock to get around. It creates a lot of difficulty in, 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 in doing that. In addition to that, uh, we have found out here that, I can remember when I first started my career, we, if you need to put into what water systems are, you would have to start punching wells in the way you went. Well, now, when you punch a well, you may or may not get good water and you may or may not. So, so now, when, when you, when you're putting in a water system or you're expanding a water system, number one, do you have the ability to, to know what the well is going to cost you? And I think the range on the well, uh, you, you can spend two to three times what, what you could on a well if you get a good board or resource with that. Second thing is, have you gotten treatment water? And then, have you got a central treatment plant or have you, are you going to treat on site? Well, if you're putting wells all over the county, you've got one treatment site and you've got to pump water back to your treatment facility and then to pump it in line. So, you have got a wide range of things to consider as you, as you, as you, as you expand the system. In, in, in my opinion, I've worked with large systems and small systems that were in trouble. For example, I went with, to tell you where people jump off and want to do something. I've worked with, with, with a town that wanted to put in at sewer treatment. Well, they decided they didn't want to do that. They got a grant that they could tie onto the city. Well, what happened when they did that is the city started charging for what they were pumping into their system. Well, they didn't realize that your system was wowed. So, instead of using a hundred thousand gallons of, of capacity month, they were using a half million because of the infiltration. So, they ended up literally, you know, the treatment building, the towns and the city said, that's not my problem. We've got treated, we can't, we can't take out the water that just flowed into the system so you get into that. So, so it took a long time to, to fire that kind of stuff out to do it. Same thing is, I've worked with small water systems that were existing that basically did not have any debt, but they had not maintained the system and couldn't afford to operate it. So, then we spent lots of times looking for people to take it over. So, when we get into these things, yes, they're giving you some good rules of what you can happen, but the same thing is, I would tell you, depending on the circumstances, your cost of, of that will go up as opposed to come down depending on the unforeseen circumstances that you, that you will run into. We've worked with numbers of communities where we would go in and, and basically could base on the engineering things that they had provided, show them that you really can't afford this system if we would give you a hundred percent, if we can give you the system you couldn't afford to operate. Likewise, when you get into some of these systems and we're expanding and you've got the dirty water, you've got, uh, you don't have the adequate flow, you can get into some circumstances where it's just about beyond your capacity to manage with, with the flow and the flushing and the things that's going to, that is going to come in. So, this, this is a, this is a challenging thing. Now, what I think is remarkable about what you've done, instead of being pessimistic about that, Mr. Chairman, I think what is, is remarkable is the things Sampson County has done with water to cover as much as, much as, much as, much as you have. The goal is to serve, the goal is to serve obviously as many people as you can. The whole, uh, the whole thinking of the board at the time we started the Johnson County interconnection was to build our capacity to the point that we could expand and help reach the people that we might not otherwise reach is, which is in effect what you're doing. But I will be honest with you, it is unlikely, certainly during my lifetime, that you'd be able to get water probably to all areas of the counties as most areas are. If, if we had a concentration of, of, of people, that, that certainly simplifies it. But quite frankly, I like the, I like Sampson County and I like the ruralness of it and so, in, in my mind, I sort of look at this as, as a, as a challenge. It comes with the quality of life that we have in, in some other areas. So, it is a complicated issue and if you're somewhere and you don't have water, and I've been there too, uh, it can be a very emotional issue, i- i- issue as well. So, uh, so, so see, they talk about these numbers. Understand those numbers and the cost and evaluation can change and more than likely, Lynn will come back to you and tell you it's going to cost you more rather than less than what he is projecting his town goes by.
The, um, for the chart, if somebody brings a petition in the office, we look at each one of them and it's usually within a couple of days. I just wanted to go through this real quick. On a distribution line, I've got a handout, handout in here. First one, there's fourteen hoops to jump through before you can turn the water on. If, if it, if it clears all the hurdles, if we've got money, we've got funding, if everything hits just right, there's fourteen steps before we turn that water on. And it takes, um, one to two years to get all that done. And there's nothing, nothing, that's if we streamline and push. On the next sheet, we've got a transmission line. It's, there's about twelve hoops to jump through on that and it takes one to three years to put one new in. It's usually more than two to three. That's, that's the steps that the public works and we have to jump through and engineer has to jump through before, we don't, we, they don't let us go down to Big Blue and buy us some water lines, start putting water on in. There's a lot of red tape and we've got to go through these steps to meet all the requirements from Raleigh that's public water supply. I just want to let you know that it is a slow process. It's, um, it can be a little frustrating from down there. We do it. On cost savings, the board approved for us to buy a boring machine for about eighty-seven thousand dollars. We saved thirty-two thousand dollars by boring old taps on green back roof on one crutch. We got a bid on it before we bought it, crutch. We knew what it cost, board taps, and that's why we went to the board and asked to buy a boring machine. We knew it was going to cost us thirty-two thousand dollars on that one early and we only paid eighty-seven thousand for the boring machine. So, this, this forty percent paid for already and we just started. It's also saving us thirty-six hours per month using boring machine. We used to put in one tap a day because we had a manual bore. This one, we can put in two, if we're lucky, three in a day, usually two. So, um, we've also replaced fourteen hundred manual reeds with radio reeds. It's saving us fifty man hours per month. People getting down on their hands and knees reading meters. We've got a bottle truck. It's all electronic now. The, um, we saved fifty-eight thousand dollars by purchasing, purchasing a SCADA system. We took it out of the contract at I forty, bought it ourselves, saved fifty-eight thousand dollars. And the same man that was going to put it in the force is going to put it in force now. It was just, it was, it was the profit that the contractor was going to make. We saved fifty-five thousand by buying a generator using the bid information for the I forty well. We got a bid, it came in high, we rebid it, it came in high again. We went out on the, we solicited three bids, informal bids, and because it fell under the threshold, we, we bought it for, um, was it eighty-eight thousand? Eighty-eight thousand dollars and it was fifty-eight thousand, or fifty-five thousand dollars higher going through the bidding process. Sometimes that's, that happens. We also entered in bolt water agreement with City Clinton. Right now, we're projecting to save thirty-five hundred dollars this year. That's not a lot of money, but that's thirty-five hundred dollars. In summer, we've got a large rural water system. It does have its challenges, long water lines. We've got many assets to operate. The system's achieving revenue projections developed by the system inception. We're running about three percent over our budget revenues a year. That's proof of system. So, we're in good shape. Reevaluate, we, we reevaluate the system growth and expansion policies constantly. Evaluation system for expansion must provide fairness to all areas of the county. We continue to elevate rates and fees to provide all costs that are covered. We just had a policy approved last month. It's got a few fees that we were, we're charging now for people that are tampering with our water meters who've never done it before. And we, we've, it's a hundred dollars. People go out and tamper with our water meter. We turn their water off, those didn't pay their water bill. We go back out there and they turn their water back on, a hundred dollars bill. And I pay them. Continue, we, we've got new revenues from Johnson County that should, got build a reserve for infrastructure growth. And that is, that concludes the water side. I do have a small amount on, um, the building side that the board needs to look at if they got time. Is any questions about the?
Before you say, is there any questions? Let's do this one. Is there any questions from the commissioners? Let, let's do that, Mr. Chairman. Any commissioner with questions on the water? Let us get through the building and then we can work on, we can work on.
Since the budget was approved due to power, it has a new program. They've approached us and, and told us before. They've approached the county with an energy savings program. The cost from the county would be right at thirty-six thousand dollars to liberate logging in six buildings. six buildings. The savings is projected to be almost a little over nineteen thousand dollars a year in those six buildings. The payout would be twenty-two months and the lights would be warranted for ten years. The lighting upgrade actually costs a little over ninety-seven thousand, right at ninety-eight thousand dollars. Duke Energy is paying out fifty-seven, six thirty-six. And they've asked if we won't participate. Our part will be thirty-five, about ninety-eight. And I need to know from the board what their thoughts are on that.
Just call, we got comments on that.
I'd say just do it yesterday.
Is there questions from the commissioners? Is there?
I have a comment on it.
Oh, okay.
We did the same thing at my business. And I didn't see my electric bill go down at all. Now, is there some way to guarantee that you're going to save that?
But you can certainly monitor it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that sufficient to monitor?
Well, you're going to monitor it, but that doesn't mean if it, if it ends up not saving you any money, you can just spend it. But, and that's what happened with me. And I'm not saying this is going to happen here, but that's my experience. I've only got one. Just move thoughts.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's why we're such a good thing. Any other questions or help?
Anything I say, I'll do. I have to guarantee. It would be nice if Duke would do the same.
Oh, yeah, for sure. For sure. Mr. County Attorney, is this, or is this required? What does this require?
If you want to vote to operate, so they're just going in and replacing the lighting. There's not going to be any structural work or anything required of the building.
Not sure. My managers don't come in. My manager is a subsidiary of Duke. They will come in, they will replace all the lightings and they don't have to touch anything.
Now, does Duke have, does Duke subsidiary have to do this or, so you couldn't, another vendor couldn't do this?
Are you, are you, are you asking the board for an appropriation of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars?
It's just thirty-five, nine seven.
Thirty-five, nine. How do we get the money back from Duke? In other words, is Duke going to pay the vendor fifty-seven thousand dollars? Duke's going to pay fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah, I don't know. I thought it's only thirty-five, ninety-seven.
That's what you need to prepare.
Because I mean, normally, you know, if you were purchasing this, you know, this is above the informal bidding threshold. But I mean, if it's not something that can be bid, then that probably they can't. Well, they're not, it's not really construction or repair. I mean, they're not.
Well, let's, let's do this. Let's do this later. So we're beating all this.
Money.
Money.
King, given commissioners, Commissioner Kibb's comments. If it's okay, let's go back to, because when I hear that description, it's, it's, well, they're a subsidiary and they're, you know, and a little bit of, that begins to have a little tad of smell. Can you go back to them, boys, Commissioner Kibb, find out why they're going to do security? And also let them know that, you know, that they're mandating we use a certain contract term. Will you get, because I mean, they mandate we use a certain contract and it's above the bid threshold. I mean, I don't know. Give them a little song. Let's, let's set that up.
And the other item is.
Is that, is everybody good with that? Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kibb. Everybody good? Uh, we see you on Monday night. If you're ready. Oh, yeah. If you're not ready Monday night, I mean, we can give time for that. Bye, guys.
Corr house roof, got slate roof, insurance sweep, looks like it fell off the building.
This is the place to fall off the building.
We've had four pieces to fall off this year.
This is.
Just got a pick of your life.
There is some option. This is the same exact thing as this, it's just been the overlayed font.
Just looks nice, sir. Actually, I'd be under that one if that.
You have to. This is ten, all alone.
I do have a mispronounced slide. At one time, the level was a little cheaper. And we got a bid, it was actually pretty far today because he, the contractor didn't include one item that others did. So we weren't comparing apples and apples. So he went back to drawing board and added the flat roof over the porch. When we get done with this roof, this forest, you have a food, the money to do all this already in our budget. I need to know what direction the board feels like. I mean, we're going to recommend the composite. We've got bids of, the high one was three hundred and eighty-two thousand, the middle bid was three hundred and fifty-five thousand, and the lowest bid was three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that was actually the local contractor.
Are they? And so they're, they're, they're apples, apples, what?
The, the local contractor is, is he a roofer or just a contractor?
He's a general contractor to the stuff, a roofer.
Has he got, has he got references where he's?
It's generations of construction.
Yeah, they build schools and government buildings.
When you say low, what, what is low?
Are those prices for the composite? Okay. Just curious, how did the ten price match up?
The ten was three hundred and fifty-five thousand because he was the low bidder until we found out, he told us that he didn't include the PPU that the, the fat, the membrane with. He was a real high member and he got to his three talks. So that, it, it put him in second place.
What's the difference between a ten and a composite?
No longer fifty years.
Well, there you go.
I will show you, we've got a picture of a local resident that's got the ten roof. That is ten. And the composite will look even better. This gentleman here lives near the Bears County.
So the money's in there. Are you just asking which one we want to?
Yes, sir.
And let me, let me ask you again, what are you recommending to buy?
I'm recommending the composite with the local contractor that's got all the experience.
I mean, is this sufficient information to?
It's in within the informal bid range. So you actually have a good flexibility in terms of.
Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Galloway, y'all still good? All right. Joel, so, so tell us what, tell me, the motion, should the motion, whomever is going to make it, should say we're going to wear, wear, reward the vendor. Elbow.
To the lowest responsible, responsible bidder.
We don't have to call names and details. We just have to say that.
Well, I mean, which is, yeah, which is that particular vendor.
Well, the lowest bidder was.
Generation.
Generation.
They're not even on this.
It's Henry Fairwell.
Oh, I had it down three fifty-five and thirty twenty-five. So it's on your list. It's three eighty-two, three twenty-five, and three fifty-five.
I'm going to go with Lynn's recommendation, whatever she recommends.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, put the motion that we will give it, is that okay?
Why don't you tell the future maker what you're going to say?
So the motion would be to award the bid to the lowest, lowest responsible, responsive bidder. Had it, had it cost three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we're just going to.
All of us, they raise your hand. What we got through that first?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Lynn, before we go, before we go any further, further, accolades to you and your team. I mean, really, it's a tough job and y'all, y'all are fighting with this body. So thank you from all the commissioners and, uh, to me.
I want to applaud you. Thank Mr. Reynolds and his staff for coming and presenting to us today because I have been in meetings and contacted Mr. Reynolds over the past several months since I've been on board, talking about war for District Four. And he has explained it to me and he did even a better job today. In fact, I told Mr. Harvey how he, how he did, and it was just excellent. I understand more about it now than I did then. It's, it's really technical and I think you did a good job explaining it. And I think most of us got most of it. I just feel that.
I want to thank Mr. Reynolds also. I went outside with him to see how this was done. And he did explain to me the cost and all that day and really gave me an excellent overview of what they have to do to get this down. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to commend him as well. This is just one part of what they do. They do, they look at everything in this town that we own. And the water is just one little piece of. So I commend you for the effort and the time and the hard work that you put in and the hours.
I agree. Thank you so much. And all the after hours, most of us were at home with our feet up. Now, we're out looking at the county. You do a great job. Great job. A little smile on your face, I might add.
All right, Ms. Coontz, did you get all your questions answered or?
All, not quite.
Well, let's talk about how many you got.
I got about three.
All right. Well, let's see if we can get them pretty short.
And again, thank you so much. And I don't know if you guys are open to coming to community meetings so you can explain it as well, but that would be something. That's, this is a comment. That would be really helpful. But, but in doing the water testing and, you know, going out to the community members, I was able to, this was a group from Appalachia State, and so me living here, I assisted them. And we went all, I would say mainly in District Four, we went as far as Turkey and then Clinton, Roseboro, a little bit of Salemburg, Harrells, Ivanhoe. We went all, all the way down. And we went to about sixty-one homes. And so three things came out of that. My first question is Lakewood School Road meets the criteria. The high school, they're right there by the high school. You skip over Lakewood School Road and the Lakewood Country Club has water. And those folks on Lakewood School Road don't. And big question is, why not?
None of that water is our system.
Okay. So you don't have anything to do with?
It's all Salemburg.
Even the Lakewood Country Club, even though it's on the Roseboro side? Or that's considered Salemburg? Okay. So we need to go talk to the Salemburg?
They annex, it's my understanding, they annex the country club and they run water with Lakewood and all that's Salemburg.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. Second question is, when we went to the Snow Hill Community, the landfill, we talked to several people who had groundwater, but they were told that they could not use their groundwater anymore. So they had to get on the city or county water. I'm imagining that was a very expensive project because most of those folks still have their well in their yard. They're just not using that water. Did that money come from the Sam, Snow Hill Community or was that through grants or did the landfill help pay for that?
I'm not sure. I was there every time.
The landfill, anyone who wanted to tie on, I believe the landfill paid a good portion of those taps at the time. We could research that to confirm it, but I think they, they offered to pay anyone's tap who wanted, or a portion thereof at the time. Because at the time, that would have been part of the district waters developed, left in handwork.
Um, thank you for that. And then lastly, so there was, there's an understanding, or at least there's an assumption. And I heard several people say it. Well, oh, I moved here because I was near like Union Elementary School or I was, so I knew that the, the school had to be on county water. That meant I would be. Now, is it true that all those schools are on county water? Or, like that assumption that a person might be thinking they're moving to a place because they know that?
Ms. Coontz, I, I, before you answer that, I mean, that, that's, that's a slippery slope when we say someone assumed.
No, that's what I'm getting at. Like to help clear up that assumption?
Well, I mean, no one should assume.
No, no, no. My question is about the schools themselves. Are, are, is it safe to say all of our schools?
No, we can answer that.
Right.
So, so.
All the water, all the schools are on some type of, of a water system.
Whether it's, just, just.
Not necessarily ours.
Just draw it down. Not necessarily ours, but they're only public system.
Lakewood and the school in town and the elementary, they're on Salemburg and then Roseboro Middle's on Roseboro Water. So they're all water systems.
Right. So I know like in our community, we have Mintz Academy. Now, I don't know if Mintz Academy is on, I, I don't know if they even want to be, but I know like if they're trying to build, it seems like eventually they would want to have access to county water. And so then our community is right there. Like we would be in that one mile radius. Like what would that, would it take the school, like just say they just got to influx of students and they started to build and get bigger. Does that help the community around it in terms of being able to potentially get access?
Mr. Reynolds, I don't know if you've heard of him, but he's strictly catch, I guess. I mean, each case is looked at in order. I mean, making a generalization like that, I think is dangerous, especially as public servants to make that. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I've looked at it. I've looked at that a couple of years ago because the, the minister over there, that is a private school. And he called and your well was a problem. And so Neander through the county to get a water source, it was like seven or eight miles just to get, and there are very few homes. I've gotten that at office. I, we just couldn't do it. We didn't have the funding to do it. And it's another system that we had to go so far to get to a water source. And they are limited with groundwater over there. And that's why we're having problems. So it's not, it's not an area that would be a candidate to build a well down because our GDA engineers say there's, you know, not an abundance of groundwater. So we have looked at it and it just, it just, the numbers didn't, you know.
But it did change. It would be catch.
It would be, to go that far, there'd have to be a lot of grants.
Mr. Collins.
The, the quickie or something simplistic is, is in, in USDA, we use what's called benefit users. And the way you benefit it is your residential users. So one way of looking at it in a quick regard is we would take the water that Mintz uses and divide it by an average water bill of probably in four thousand, five thousand. And determine how many users and use that in the determining of the ten units per mile. That's, that, that may not always be that way, but that, that's a pretty, that's a pretty good rule to follow, if you, if you, if you're looking at Mintz as the, as the flagship to justify water to the county.
No, thank you. And I guess my last question is my last comment because, you know, we've been having some community meetings and, you know, people were echoing the same thing. Like they don't trust their water. Maybe they live too close to a hog farm or like in my dad's church situation. They kept getting public notices on the church saying high nitrate level. Don't drink the water. Don't give the water to babies. Don't, don't make formula with the water. They kept getting those notices probably like the last four or five years until the church just took it upon themselves to dig a well. They paid it thirty-five hundred dollars and dug two hundred and fifty feet in the ground. Now, the church was able to do that, but for an average person where the income here is very low, the median income, to ask that person to shell out thirty-five hundred dollars to dig down deep enough to avoid. Now, the church was able to do that, but for an average person, where the income here is very low, the median income, to ask that person to shell out thirty-five hundred dollars to dig down deep enough to avoid nitrate runoff, or whatever there else may be, like, some people had a high arsenic level, some of it was lead, but we didn't even test for the nitrate. So it would be really disheartening to go back, from everything you're saying, all the development is in the northern part. So we got the District Four in the southern part, and all we're hearing is, is there's no way we can help you, I'm sorry. What, what else can we do? Because I would hate to go back and send that message that.
Well, well, first of all, let me say, if there, I mean, I asked you a while ago, if there's documentation of those, we can work on. If there's documentation of high nitrates, these kind of things, I mean, it gives us an opportunity to raise the points on the system. So to say we're doing nothing, if there's someone that has that, Mr. Collins, are you aware of anybody that, that has, I mean, if, if there's documentation, I mean, that's what I asked you earlier, that's what I asked Commissioner Lee. I mean, telling us that, yay, I, I certainly believe what you're saying, but I mean, when you take it up to the state or county, they need documentation. So to say that, it, it would be unfair to say, to ask, I mean, I told Ms. Lee, and I'll tell you, I'm glad to go to any community. I mean, certainly, you know, you all, you can refer to District Four. Now, Ms. Coons, I'm gonna be real honest with you, I take it real serious. They put my hand on the Bible and said, you're gonna serve everybody. So when I hear you say serve District Four, or certain district, you know, I got to serve everybody, and so did all, two to my wife and two to the lady. So that's my goal, is to serve everybody. If there's documentation, I mean, it's very unfair to say that, you know, we're not willing to help, because there's documentation. But the fact remains, it's a non-tax paid system, so we don't take tax from a non-water person, the person that doesn't have public water, and put it in another person. That would be unfair, unfair that everybody don't have water, absolutely, but that would be, so it's an enterprise, and you heard that multiple times today. And you're, and I mean, it's just a simple fact, that Clinton and, and Nor, we, we, we're waiting on the doubt, maybe, maybe the census tide is gonna tell us there, but to meet that criteria, it's typically more sparsely populated.
Right, and.
That's, that's, I mean, we raised ten hands, but, uh, I mean, we both raised both of them, I mean, we can't change that.
Right, that's true, so it's not to say that you weren't, I, I would never, I don't think my words were not doing anything, but the, the vast cost makes it almost feel like, basically, when you put those numbers before people, just, I mean, those are some major numbers. So it's a little disheartening for people who have been fighting water issues since the nineties, I believe, who basically are living off of, I mean, we talk to people who, they don't use water, they use, they use bottled water to cook with, wash their clothes, for everything. So it's really disheartening as a representative of those individuals to hear, like, the numbers, like, we can't change, you're right, it's sparsely populated, so it's almost like, well, you have to do basically all the things that you need, our, our areas are, are pretty much not gonna be able to, to meet those standards.
But, if you hear me one more time, if you put that in writing, and you show us some documentation, we can change that, that's, we, that can be changed. And I'm appreciative of you being here, and every citizen being here, but give us something, give, you say, well, this nitrate's high, or this, I mean, give us something in writing, I mean, we will not be in a pack out, it will be in support of. I mean, is that, is that unfair?
Well, no, it's not unfair, but it's also another cost on that individual, like for mine, because Appalachian State researchers let us know that the state has to do their own testing. So some of the individuals have already started to get the, the water tests of the state, so it will be legitimate, you know, measurements. And my uncle, who's, um, you know, he's a veteran, and, you know, he's on full disability, they said, well, we don't have any help, he's, he paid seventy-five dollars out of his pocket, he was like, well, just give me two weeks, and I'll get you the money. So he brought me the money over, went over and filled out the application form, they let me know, well, it might be, it's gonna be up to six weeks or more, because we're behind. Now, he had high arsenic levels, so that's one person, so if all the individuals.
But you, but you have, nobody's presented the arsenic, nobody's presented that.
I actually wrote it up and, and sent an email and I read it in the comments, but what I'm saying is, like, each individual's gonna have to be responsible for paying that cost to get someone to come out, and they've already told us that they're behind on water testing for ground well water. So we're, if six weeks, we're talking about almost two to three months to even get the numbers.
Find it, find us one, find us one.
Okay.
Um, find us one, find us one, so that's all I say, Commissioner Kibb?
I just wanted to make sure, all the commissioners since I've been on, are in favor of finding water for every citizen in Central County. I have water, that, that, I do have water, boy, I got a good, twenty-nine dollars on it. And so I understand, and I, I, I do have a good water plan, but we all would like everyone to have water, and that's why we set, the system is designed the way it is, we take that money, and put it right back in, provide more water, more customers. And if we've gotta go all the way over there, but we only got enough money to work to here, that's as far as we can go, and then a little later, and then a little farther, but it takes time to, to get all the way to where you wanna be. And unfortunately, that's, that's where we all are. But we, we do, we do your thing, we do what it's like to have, to have new ones. It's a bad thing that when you're here in the shower, and, and quit, and, you know, you've got soap all in your eyes, and you've got to figure out a way to get a winner going, and, uh, so I, I know, I've been there, uh, but you also want some water.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, with regards to the statement about public meetings, I did want to note, to let everybody know, this is being recorded and will be uploaded to our YouTube channel, so anybody who wants to hear all of the presentation, it will be on the Central County government YouTube channel, so that helps.
And we tell anybody don't pay time into work sessions, but, but we certainly want to.
Now, thank you so much for taking your questions.
Commissioner Galvin, you, you got comments?
I just wanted to say, I thank you for what you're saying, giving them the opportunity to know that they get the information, what we're doing.
Absolutely.
We, we, we want, we want to help there, so, uh, like, like you said, we just need that, to be prepared before, uh, North Carolina Board, that they're gonna come in and do the work.
They, they, they're behind, COVID, they're behind, I get it, but we don't, we don't need to file a lawsuit. If we got one or two thousands in a concentrated area, then we can, we can make sense, I mean, and I, you know, I'm not saying filing fees, like, if they send it out. Commissioner, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lee?
Ms. Coons, what I'm hearing, Commissioner O'Wu will say is that if you will get us some proof, he's not saying, like he said, he don't believe, but he got, everything got to be right. And this is something I've never heard before, about our water, and the way our water is, we've never gotten this far. So we need to take what he's telling us seriously, and get what he's asking us to get, and then see, not from, um, preconceived notions right now, until something is actually done by, by us, when we see what you bring to us. Let's do that, and then we can be satisfied, of course.
Thank you. Any other comments? I wanna thank everybody paying in, paying here today, um, because it's valuable, you know, I, I personally operate on facts and principles, that, that's all I ask. And that, as, as, as was pointed out, we are facing a local border, so we won't, we won't serve no citizens that don't, or they ask to put their hand on the ballot. Thank you. Is there a motion for, is there a promotion for a nerve? All, so, all those, do we reach this, we can think, or we? Thank you, thank you, everybody.